Okay, I'd like to call to order the CSSU Board of School Directors' regular meeting of September 15. We're going to start with adjustments to the agenda. We have an add of 7.6, which is a personnel addition. You should have gotten a note from Sandy about the middle of the day, but we can take you through that when we get to that one. We're also striking 8.5, the Section 125 reinstatement of the plan. That doesn't need to be on the agenda. It's under the consent agenda. 8.6, which is also on the consent agenda, has to do with appointing faculty supervisors as bestest managers. There was nothing in the packet for that. It's something we do on a regular basis.
Say, facility.
If anybody would like, I can pull it off and we can talk to Bob about it.
Is it facility?
Should say, facility supervisors.
Teachers have so much on their plate already.
I just noticed it.
Yeah, we would be in trouble doing that.
So is everybody okay with that one on the consent agenda or with the correction? Anybody else have anything, adjustments to the agenda they'd like? Anything comfortable with the consent agenda items? Audience communications. I see Kathy, she's a new CBU board member, but I don't suppose you're here to talk to the board about anything?
No.
Just checking. Okay, so we're on to 4.0, presentations. 4.1, board development open meeting law.
Can I just jump in for a second and say, pay attention because this is specifically listed under CSSU debrief. So this is considered board training. We want to make sure that what Cindy shares with you, you will then share with your local boards. Okay? Thank you.
It's been an interesting day, so I'm a little discombobulated as to rely heavily on your model of meeting law information in your packet. Shortly after the Colt report, I think, it's about six pages in. I stole this directly from Vermont BSBA. I don't believe in recreating the real, and it's not necessary. So this is just the annual or by and no reminder about the open meeting law and making sure that we're standing compliance, particularly boards get in trouble around electronic communications. So on the last page of the thing, there's a little section about that. There's basically three types of meetings you all have. There's regular meetings, which are your third Wednesdays of the month, most of the time. Your special meetings, which are set up because you have something to discuss outside of your regular meeting. Either it could be because you're in the middle of a hiring process for a superintendent, or there's some topic that's come up, but you give the notice. And then there's the true emergency meeting, which are extremely rare, where you don't have the same notice requirements that you would normally have. You have Sandy and Elaine delegated mostly to administer that for you, make sure you're following all the posting requirements and the notice to the media and getting out the agenda. And of course Sandy does all of your minute taking for you. Are there any questions about that aspect of the open meeting law?
When we had student discipline here meeting, is that number two, is special meeting?
They are usually special meetings, yes, unless we can attach it to a regular meeting. But for CBU, I think they're almost always special meetings.
Okay.
What about committee meetings? Do they have to be warned?
Yes, so that was made clear, not last legislative session, but the one before, I believe they updated the open meeting law and tried to clarify. So any meeting where board business is being discussed is considered a board meeting regardless of how many people are going to be there. So it used to be the thought, rule of thumb was, oh, if there's going to be a quorum, we need to warn the meeting. Now committees of the board, even with only one representative, are supposed to be warned. So because you've delegated some of your board work to this committee. Even though that committee may not have any authority to take action, ultimately that recommendation of the committee will go to the board for action. And if the board relies solely on their work, all of the discussion that's supposed to be occurring in open meeting is actually occurring at that committee meeting. Does that make sense? So that's part of what they clarified. So we're all trying to get better at making sure we're taking minutes at those meetings and also having Sandy post those as well. And they would fall under special meetings. So the policy committee has a pretty standing schedule. Some of your other committees have standing schedules. Negotiation usually knows a year in advance what their schedule is. It doesn't mean that all meetings become public. Your committee meetings can still fall under the executive session rules, but you still need to warn them.
What about NCOG committees?
If it's a committee of the board, it still needs to be. So if Elaine's got a committee that has a board representative on it, but it's still administrator committee, it wouldn't fall under these. But if the board has charged Elaine and Bob to organize some committee, but it's still the board's committee, goes with me. There's no harm in notifying the committee of all the meetings. You won't get in any trouble in that one, but we do want to make sure we're meeting the intent of the meeting. The next area is, of course, executive sessions. This is another area that we all need to get better at, is specifying the reason for going into executive session. Some would argue you shouldn't even have executive session listed on your agenda automatically, but that you should put it on there with the specific reason why you would be going into executive session, which Sandy has started to do for collective bargaining when we know we're going to do that, for example. So when you're taking your motions to go into executive session, you should be saying, I move into executive session for the purpose of, and it should be, fall under one of the criteria under the law for executive session. And during that motion, you should also include who you're inviting into executive session. Some people would also say you need to come in and out each time, so you can't go into executive session for three things. You should come in and out each time. How much anyone to get pressed on that, I don't know. It's one of those best practice things. And again, as I think it talks about technically speaking, executive session isn't confidential except for by the BSBA code of ethics. But there's obviously some trust because the reason you're going into executive session is because there's usually some kind of privacy rights you're protecting, or a real estate deal, or something like that.
Cindy, one thing that's important on there, it says, while in executive session, a board may only discuss the subject matter referenced in the motion to enter. I think sometimes it's very easy to stray and just have a conversation, but you really have to be disciplined about coming out of executive session if you're not sticking on that thing.
And the other thing to remember is there can be components of something that fall under executive session, but a deliberation would come out. So for example, when we're updating you during the collective bargaining process of where we are in the process and getting input, that will happen often in executive session. But when it comes time to adopt the collective bargaining agreement, that happens in open session and that there can be deliberation about what the ultimate tentative agreement ended up being. And that's appropriate for executive session. Any other questions about that? All right, and somewhere within it, I can't put my hands on it right now, there is also talk about the electronic communications you've all been really good about, especially the board chairs putting on their little statement reminder not to reply all, so that you don't get into a situation where you're doing board business via email and therefore also cutting out the open meeting law. Anything else you would like to know, have questions about? It's pretty basic.
I think one thing we'll have to mature into as we go is the idea of being able to have an internet meeting with committees. I think there are ways that you can do that and it can be very effective. A lot of us do it at work. You just need to be able to do it in such a way that the public can participate. But you know, cameras, phones, you know, phones on, cameras on computers and everything else, it's not that hard to do and it could be an effective way to have a good conversation with people and avoid emails.
Yeah, and like anything, it's often really about the perception. So it's really easy if you see three board members all happen to be at the same event. You've just got to be so careful, the smaller boards, just make sure you're really careful that there's no talk about board business.
I think it's a good thing to be reminded of at least once a year or so. Any questions on this in general or follow-ups? Great. Thank you, Cindy. Okay, and now the one you've all been waiting for, 4.2, budget process and plan. Mr. Mason?
Thanks for the lead in, Gene. We have only four slides tonight. The first is just an overview of what CSSU is. There really are no changes to this slide. We do haven't moved anything in or out of the two circles. I will honestly tell you, the fact that Student Services and Special Ed is over here for the second year, for the four of us, that's Miranda and Megan and Cindy and I, it feels like it's the first year. We're finding out a lot of new stuff now in the second year about the process of that big portion of change. So we aren't quite done with that one. But we haven't moved anything else on the chart. From that point forward, the budget will run pretty much as it has prior years. Any questions on that slide? See if I can make this work. Oh, I can't. So the next slide is budget assumptions. You all have the budget assumption sheet in your package. You can look at it. You can give me any input, or the four of us, any input you'd like relative to budget assumptions. A reminder, we need this to know how to pull everything together for the submission to the state for the service plan on October 15th, and then the presentation to all of you of the first budget to begin working with and then change. You each individually on a local level can make any changes you want to that budget, but after this is published and we do a month and a half's worth of work in about a week, you're going to change your budget by budget change sheet, not by having this conversation about this budget assumption sheet. I will also add new this year, you've inserted a budget committee who had an opportunity to spend time with us one evening in advance of this meeting. They reviewed the budget assumptions line item by line item, weren't necessarily fully comfortable with ending the conversation that night, so they've asked for a number of different supplemental requests for information to clarify things that are in certain lines within that budget assumption sheet. They didn't necessarily want to hold up this process, but there is information that might come out of that committee a little later in the process that informs some of the things that are in your budget. So I'll bring your attention to the budget assumption sheet. Is there anything we need to talk about on that sheet of paper this year? Yes?
Sorry to backtrack and be a little slow, but I think those of us who may have opened the full budget package are, might be missing some of this and that we have to go back to the, we have to go back to the CSSU and pull it up on agenda item. I mean, it's six. Just in case some of us are like scrambling.
It isn't an easy product in your packet?
It's in 7.2.
Yeah, in your local.
Oh, to approve it later in your agenda.
Oh, in your local, yeah. It's in your local.
Okay.
And it gets in your CSSU, which is a simple.
Okay, I apologize for that. So let's all go to it. About that far back, just before the budget calendars?
Oh, yeah.
And it looks like that. You're going to approve it a little later on in the agenda. I'm just entertaining your questions. This one, the agenda.
This is a very general question.
Yep.
When you look at fuel oil in your estimate, 5% increase.
Where did you get that 5%? Generally, we talk to someone who's knowledgeable in the industry, not necessarily on fuel oil, because we had difficulty finding anybody who's got some forecast of what's going to happen in the market. So in this case, we just kind of picked 5% over 14, 15's actual to get us all the way to 16, 17 budget numbers. So it's two years of growth, about 5%. But as you saw in the last two years, we may throw that number out the window about one month into that actual year.
You do it that way, it gives good news.
We hope we're on the side of giving you good news, and in some cases we have, like healthcare, that is the way it plays out. But in other areas, we've structured some numbers and then been surprised. But you're right, we try and land on that side of the filter.
So is it a general question? Individual boards may have different preferences on how conservative to be with some of those estimates. You know, how's the process in terms of, if it gets approved at CSSU, then a local board decides that maybe some of these assumptions were not the assumptions they would have made?
If the traditional process is that you, as a board with your administration, feel you should revisit some of these numbers locally, then you need to identify that very early on with your local administrator. And then they will work with, say it's fuel oil, or say it's electricity, they'll work with their local facilities guy and you to come up with a number that is more satisfactory to the board. Yes?
But if you want it in the baseline, you kind of need it tonight.
Right, so I think the intent is that this builds your baseline and anything you want to change perfectly, I mean, it's your budget, you change whatever the board wants to, but there'll be a change, change plan.
There'll be a change order.
Well, off the top of your head, say, on a $12 million budget, eight and a half million of it is labor for teachers' sake, or labor for the organization. 80% of your budgets are salary and benefits for staff.
So for fuel oil and transportation fuel and things like that, what's the magnitude of that number?
A bit of it depends on the school, but it's 1% or less.
Actually, to answer your question, the other 20% of your budget, if it's up 5%, that's 1% of the total. If it's up 10%, that's 2% of the total.
Yeah, I understand that math, being an engineer. But it's like, I laugh that everybody goes, everybody has spent so much of your time talking about fuel oil and it's a really small portion of our budget.
I think it's more an example than it is a single issue.
And we work in the margins of the budgets, right? I mean, nobody looks at the entire thing, look at, you end up spending a lot of time on the details, but point taken.
Yep. Yeah, the only thing I'll offer is if you've got a structural problem with the number that you know you're going to end up with, say, the budget number is rolling in at 5% and you're trying to get it a percent down, you aren't going to get it with fuel oil. And you aren't going to get it by hoping that utility costs come in far lower than anyone would estimate. You really, if you need structural change, you really need, or cost change, you're going to go after something more substantial than one of these ones. You all know that. Other questions?
My only, I don't think it necessarily goes to the assumptions, but maybe further down in the budget process, but is how we look at our fund balances and how much we should allocate to the next budget impacted at all by, you know, the possibility that we might be merging? Will that affect how much we should apply?
My first reaction was no, because where I thought you were going to go was there's a cost containment feature of the law that it's very advantageous towards to have a fund balance to allow them to have a conversation in January applying it. So this would be a very strategic year to use fund balance. But your question, do you want to spend it all before you give it to the combined entity?
That's part of it, but also, Bob, you know, part of, you know, we've had a little bit better of a cushion in the last two years than we've had in other years, but there's that whole, you don't want to apply it all because then you might not have that the next year and then it looks like your budget is going up a lot and then the community's in uproar, especially in Charlotte where we keep getting our budgets, you know, having to go two times. So I just, I'd like to know, just as we move into that, how that would all play out, what the best thing would be for?
I understand the question completely. It's a far better conversation for me to have locally with each of you, given the amount of money that you've now got in fund balance, other pressures that you're seeing, because it is, it is kind of a local technique, how best to use it. But you are absolutely right, if you use a whole lot of fund balance one year and you've got none the next year, then it starts you off feeling like you've had the equivalent expenditure increase.
I'm sorry, I believe next year we'll be doing this again, even do vote in May to consolidate, because it won't happen for a year.
Yes, it will be your, it will be your account to play with, one more year after this year, then you jump on to it.
Do you have more, Bob, or you're just, are you kind of wrapping up? I got a touch on the calendar.
I have two more slides, but I can be very quick, Gene. So if I go forward, I can. You're going to see this next month. This is your commitment to either continue to use purchased services or not. The only change I made on the slide is prior versions for the past 10 years have had transportation with a non-participating X next to Charlotte because they use Vetsa Transit, effective with the new law that was passed last session. We need to manage their accounts, so they're still with Vetsa, but the bills are being paid by CSSU and hence they're a participating member of the transportation. And then this is the meetings that you've got set up after this one and what their agendas are. The next time we meet is on October 20th on budget and we're doing purchased services. So we'll see you all then. Quick enough?
Bob, do you want to touch on, you touched on the Act 46 cost containment. Do you want to just touch on that again, what that is or what it means to boards?
You all have seen the June correspondence or May correspondence. It says the law, or the legislature for your benefit passed a law that caps spending at 2% in total across the state year to year and then allows that actual percentage to fluctuate based on your spending per pupil in required years. So if you were a low spending per pupil number school, you're going to be closer to 2%. If you already were a high spending school, you're going to be closer to a cap of 1%. And this is a cap on per pupil spending, spending per pupil with exclusions removed. So it's looking at the two-year number and saying you've got 2% to play with year to year. You've all seen your numbers. They range from, Gene, you have the sheet in front of you?
One and a half to two and a half.
One and a half to two and a half, depending on who you are. That's a, that's a note you want to have on your screen if you're heading into the process, because it will, it will be a significant barrier to budget growth. You still have the opportunity within the law to spend more than that, but you're going to be taxed double for whatever you go above the cap. Have I done cost containment justice?
Do we have any questions? Decisive dismay?
I'd like to get back to it as we get moving.
You will be. Budget committee wants to spend some time on that at their next meeting and I assume will revisit it here on a regular basis as well. And have you keep an eye on that as you're moving through the process so that you aren't disappointed or anything.
So we're going to approve all this under actions, right?
You're going to approve budget assumptions tonight and you're going to approve the budget calendar. You've all seen the budget calendar. Sandy and I made a minor revision to it earlier today. There was a time slot reserved for CSSU and no agenda attached to it. So we've kind of tightened up the schedule and now we have agendas for each. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Just a comment, when local boards look at their calendars, we, I do have a note, if you remember the conversation, that we have a lot of voters who vote early and we don't get our communications on our budgets out until like the weekend before in a lot of cases. So just keep in mind when you're looking at your local, I just want to say, CSSU, I should look at your local calendars to pencil in some way to communicate with your voters early. Yes.
Before we leave this, can you just give us a quick reminder of the SU budget committee, who's on it, what their?
We're going to have a committee report.
Committee report.
Thank you though, for reminding.
I'm not reading tonight.
I want to thank everybody for adjusting slightly so that I can get to work on time as the chair of the Sheldon Board, because we did reshuffle the schedules and I appreciate the flexibility from other boards to do that. Thank you. My boss, thank you too.
All right, we're on to reports to report, reports to the board, 5.1, Colt report.
So we started off the year very, very well. Even before the school year started, we had some really great in-service. I'm going to turn to Jeff maybe to tell us a little bit about what the in-service was like.
August 21st, we had our CSSU in-service and we spoke to you all in the spring, the PBL group, Proficiency-Based Learning group, and shared with you that we have a three-year implementation plan for a proficiency-based K-12 system. And August 21st was our first step in that process of sharing with all faculty members what the vision is, what that looks like, and emphasizing on that first day, something called desired results, how to establish what the desired results are that you're looking for in terms of what a student will know, understand and do. And then subsequent PD opportunities through CSSU will look at building assessments that are standards-based and then building pedagogy within the classroom around differentiated instruction and formative feedback leading up to it. All those things took place after a nice little opening. Gene was brilliant in her speech to the members.
Rolling in the aisles.
Aside from one crack at yours truly, it was quite good. And Lucy Pappas, the vice president of the school, at CBU, was very good as well. And Elaine Weldon was also. So it was a great start and I'm going to go ahead and slide into what else you want me to talk about.
I'm sure. I had asked Jeff to talk a little bit about Sback and the results that we've got and what we can expect from that.
And largely because the timing of it worked out nicely to support the work that I just shared with you. And that is, as you know, the Sback results came in about a month ago and were shared on a statewide level. So we've got the results. I included them in the packet. We were told for a long, long time, at least a year, to anticipate a significant drop in scores. The projections nationally were 33% of the students would demonstrate proficiency in math and 41 would demonstrate in ELA. Our numbers were significantly higher than that, which is good news. Some of that is due to the effort put into the administration of this and the integration of standards into the classroom by a number of people. Tech integrationists may be right at the top of the list with the local principals and so they deserve a lot of credit for that. And we're now figuring out how to use that data. What is really nice about the Sback data is that it is a standards-based assessment aligned with Common Core standards. And so we have information about how well we did on claims like reading and research and inquiry and problem solving. And then within those claims, there's a number of learning targets that are specific to each claim and we have data on how our students did on those as well. So as we, as professionals, build learning targets into our lexicon and into our pedagogy, we have a lot of this data to help drive that and help guide that.
Jeff, I don't have my glasses on. Am I reading this right?
Nor do I.
Grade 11, 84% proficient on?
How about that other number, 50% with distinction?
Yeah, 50% of our 11th graders were reading proficient with distinction.
That's amazing. We're very, very proud of those scores.
I don't know how Adam's going to be able to duplicate that. Well, the work isn't over.
I'm trying to make it up for me.
That's the point.
A lot of work is needed and it's not over.
That's work.
Yeah.
Thank you. If you have any specific questions for me another time, feel free to email or ask.
I was curious when those results get shared with individual students and families.
Yeah, great question. We're working on that, actually. We have, all the envelopes are stuffed, ready to roll. The reality is, there's a lot of discussion among superintendents about coordinating when those go out.
At the state as well as the regional level.
And at the state level.
And some have gone out prematurely. The training doesn't happen until October, so we're negotiating.
We are negotiating right now.
We'll let you know.
We're prepared to share them whenever we're told that it's okay to share them.
I got a question.
Yeah.
This might be too big for her.
Might have to get back.
Do it a question when you want. So not only have you gone through Sback, excuse me, you've gotten the data back and the results. Do you feel that you, like viewing the results gives you better tools than previously to analyze data and help kids move forward and to give a feeling of where the school is now and where you need to be?
Given that this is my first year in this position, I didn't spend the kind of time analyzing kneecap that I have on Sback, and so I'm coming from a very biased position. But yes, this gives me But yes, this gives me, this gives me information that is almost, that almost replicates perfectly what we're asking teachers to do in the classroom in terms of articulating what the learning looks like and connecting it to the larger standard that we've been told that if you're proficient at this, you'll be college or career-ready. And so there's a real linkage between one thing to the next in terms of the practices and then now how we are sumitively assessing that and using it in the classroom. I'm hopeful and I think we've already begun developing strategies used in the classroom that this will be a much more useful tool than the previous assessments were.
And I think that's a great point that you make. Like a lot of people associate the Common Core with curriculums, but there's curriculums that are separate from the Common Core and I really want to applaud all the districts and all the teachers for, A, teaching great curriculums and for everybody sticking to great curriculums because that's, that's the argument that stops Common Core detractors in the, in the, you know, right away when you just, well, kids are learning the curriculum, you know, and the standard is just what they're learning to. It's not my fault that your school in New York State bought a cheap curriculum.
Yeah, I leave that part out. I can refer to you like...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good point, Dave.
Go home for family holidays, that's all I hear.
So I thought, there's been another law that passed last spring was around Act 166 and early learning partnerships and there's been a lot of work around that. So I thought I would point it to Megan and kind of catch people up with where we are with that.
First, one of the things I would say is we are still very grateful to the CSSU Board for agreeing that we should be early implementers of Act 166. So universal pre-K will become required for all schools in the state starting for the 16th, 17th school year, but schools were able to early adopt or early implement. And because we have a longstanding history of implementing Act 62 and early learning partnerships, we were really well suited to continue going forward. Just sort of highlighting what's different from Act 62 to Act 166. We talked about this before, it's in the update, so I won't go into a lot of detail, but there's a statewide tuition rate, whereas before we used a formula to district by district calculate the tuition rate. Early learning students are now enrolled and registered in your schools. So you'll, you probably notice that number in your enrollment data.
Can I just jump in right there for a minute? So it is in the enrollment data, but it is, there are two numbers. So there is the K-12 number and then there's the pre-K-12 number.
Right. Just so people don't suddenly, just so that number doesn't throw people off, it's flagged.
I'm sorry, so that on our enrollment data that we have, it should show all the ELA?
As a separate number.
As a separate number.
And then total.
Yeah.
You do get money for them. Point four six?
Yes.
Point four six per student.
The other change is that we have an obligation to serve every student as soon as they want to enroll. So we can't have a, if you don't enroll by X date anymore, that doesn't work. The other piece that's different, that has been the bulk of the work for the past few weeks and continues to be a lot of work, is that AOE has reminded us that teachers and employees, actually all employees of a partner preschool program also need to comply with the criminal record check procedures that our school employees do. So there's been a lot of sort of scrambling in Chittenden County to figure out how best to do that because, for example, we have 37 partners and our colleagues across Chittenden County share those 37 partners. So rather than have a pre-K program need to go to every single Chittenden County school to get a criminal record check, we're in the process of coordinating that so that we're responsible for the ones in our geographic boundaries. Our colleagues will do the same. But that's been a big implementation piece. And just in terms of numbers that are in the report, we've been increasing our participation in this program even before this law came. And so we, you know, we serve almost 300 students this year, which is, I think, really good news. We have 300 kids who will have access to high-quality pre-K when they come to school. And we, I, I feel really good about the partnerships that we have with these programs. We, we, we set up a table with them on a monthly basis, so they aren't sort of people that we never have contact with. We meet with them, we collaborate with them, and all of that translates to better programming.
Okay, can I, questions about that? Anybody?
Elaine?
Yeah.
Not so much a question, but from, from families talking to me, the impact that this has made on their awareness of early care and education being a professional, significant impact on their, on their young children and what it, what it does. I, I think it's early for us to see it in our school systems, but as we know, it, there are many, many benefits, but, but, you know, real personal stories getting called that this is incredible. And, and our, our district, like Megan said, has really been a leader and working with some of the originators of it way back. This was tremendous, so I'm very pleased.
I have a clarification question for you. It is, let's say you have a family in Heinsberg that has a three-year-old, but they're putting their child in Burlington.
Yep.
How does that...
We send, yep, those funds go to that Burlington pre-K, which is why we have 37 partners. About 19 of them are within CSSU boundaries, but because that program isn't approved, pre-qualified is the AOE term, then our funding by law goes to that school.
But in your example, Heinsberg gets the point four seven.
Uh, count, right.
The count.
The count.
All the count for students is based on residency.
Private program. Right, and the money doesn't go to the Burlington school system, it goes directly to the private program. And other, related to that, in the past, programs would charge parents upfront and reimburse them. With this new law, they are not allowed to charge parents upfront, they're supposed to subtract that from the tuition. So for families that weren't able to manage an upfront payment, this law, if they're only accessing 10 hours, really gives them free 10 hours.
Megan, just a quick question on that too. Are they, are those other schools allowed to charge? They used to charge. They used to get a hundred dollar fee for handling that payment. I wonder is that...
That's not correct. That's the 10 hours, if you, if a parent is only seeking 10 hours, that's 10 hours of no cost pre-K. If their child is enrolled full-time, that program charges what they will for the, for anything above 10 hours. So, so that's, and, and, you know, that would be that program's development of their price structure. But if you're accessing, there, there's no administrative fee.
Yeah, okay. That's a, that, okay.
Those are able, are allowed to subtract.
We need to kind of keep moving on.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just got two more quick things. One is like I have to mention that because you mentioned it in your welcome and I mentioned it in my welcome. CDU was recognized this year as the top school in Vermont, top high school in Vermont, one of the top 50 in the country.
Yay.
And the point that Jean made at the convocation and the point I made, and neither one of us had talked to each other, was that that is the work of all of us. So kudos to Heinsberg, Shelburne, Charlotte, Williston for doing that work, for preparing those kids so that CDU can do the work that they do. So that is huge, I think. And lastly, you all as board members and, actually, I forwarded it to board members, but principals and superintendents all got a memo from Rebecca Holcomb, Secretary of Education, in August saying it's really important that for each school, we review our crisis management plans, that we review the hazing, harassment, bullying work. Cindy has been working with a trainer to get training for all of our administrative teams. That's already in place. So we take all of this really seriously. When we get a memo like this, we don't just let go, oops, that'll go in the circular file. We really look at it and say, okay, what is it that we need to do here and make sure that we're, you know, implementing best practice.
Because, you know, unfortunately, it's all in the news, right? And the, the security thing, you know, the tragedy with the DCF workers. I mean, I know we're all really tuned in to taking care of our kids. It's really kind of eye-opening to remember that we have to take care of our employees as well. So if you're, if it's not on your board agenda, you may want to consider putting it in your work plan to kind of review your security from that perspective as well as our usual school crisis. What do we do, how do we get the kids on the bus and out of the school, all the rest of that, what, for that. And the, I did want to...
The bullying is separate, yeah.
The bullying is, it's, the bully, I just wanted to mention, the bullying policy is in the consent agenda only because it's not something we can change, not because it's not important.
I'm not going to let you change it.
Right, so it is something that, that we take very seriously and Elaine, maybe we could ask you to come back at, to maybe give a briefing to the board on how you train the administration and the principals and the teachers because we don't want to have the tragedies of a missed part either.
Just a quick question on the, on the policy. So my understanding, there was a consolidation of the harassment, the bullying, and the...
Hazing.
Hazing policy. Are there any changes of substance or is it just a merger of what existed?
I think it's, it's, what it does is it, the biggest change, what I've communicated to the administrators is, the biggest change is what we're saying to you, you don't know what it is until you've done your investigation. So what it's done is it's made it clear that the procedures for the investigation are the same regardless of what type of infraction it may end up being. It may be just student misconduct, it may be harassment, but you don't know. The definitions haven't changed, so what we call bullying in the old policy is the same, what we call harassment is the same, what we call hazing is the same. But it's really a clarity piece that a lot of people put a lot of work in to get down to this one agreement. And the other supporting materials that are out on the VISVIT website right now are amazing. The toolkits that all the schools now have access to help, so it's a great change.
And this policy went into effect July 1st, so that's why it's on the consent agenda. You're all ready.
Well, it's the standard the AOE will hold us to regardless of what actions we'll take.
Okay. Anything else on the Colt Report? Thank you, Elaine. 5-2, fourth quarter FMR.
I bring the board's attention to the two-page summary cover and the one-page executive summary. Hopefully, that's clear enough that you understand what occurred in the last quarter of the year. Generally good news. I'm willing to answer any questions you might have.
So let me sit down one second. I read the...
The two-page written document.
I did that.
And then Jean helped Mike and I last year develop this executive summary that kind of brings clarity to how collectively we're doing, focusing your attention on the actual surplus or deficit.
So what about this page here, the financial management report?
Yes, that's a traditional financial management report, two pages.
Yeah.
I can answer questions on any of the pages.
So I was just, I don't want to take too much time, I was just trying to understand and match up the financial management report with your summary. It sounded to me, somebody like there was a $99,000 surplus. And I was just trying to sort of, I know it's hard with special ed having changed sort of midstream, but it looked like between core services and purchase services, we were up like to 10 versus the budget.
On the executive summary page, it's the $99,289 on total general fund surplus year to year, which is that number right there. And you can look above that line and find out what areas of the budget it occurred in. And depending on where it occurs, the complexity at CSSU is depending on where the surplus occurs, it's going to lead us to make a different recommendation as to how you might use that surplus. In the case of transportation, you've traditionally left that surplus somewhere in the vicinity of transportation so that when it swung the other way the next year, you hadn't spent it all. We'd recommend you do that in transportation and you do that in special ed at least for the next couple of years. Then in other areas, we'll recommend you use it as surplus as you head into next year's budget process.
And so what were, the adjustment, other revenues on that summary page that you're looking at, or the second column?
Yes.
So just a question, remember, please.
By and large, the CSSU financial picture leans heavily on assessments to member schools to operate. That's where the preponderance of your revenue comes from. If there's other sources of revenue or adjustments to the revenue line, they'll show up under that adjustments line. So very, for example, there is targeted revenue that is used to offset the costs of the office of the superintendent. That's shown as the $26,000. There is CY program raises some money with outside grants and other sources, so that's shown there. The 94 adjustment under food services is we lower the assessment in food services based on actual costs in food services so that assessments line up with actual expenditures. We do the same thing with transportation.
Thanks.
Remind me what Part II Enterprise Fund is.
Okay. Unfortunately, my answer will only work this year because we've changed the name of the Part II Enterprise Fund to the Imagine Enterprise Fund. It's the after-school program that operates in the communities of Shelburne, Heinsberg, and Williston.
Yes.
Okay? And it's, it's a program to provide after-school activities to, by and large, accommodate needs for children from the time school ends to the time later in the day when someone might be home. And it's very actively subscribed and participated in those three communities and is running quite well. It's an enterprise fund in that it, it needs to operate on its own. So Jeff O'Hara, who runs the program, has to make sure that he's, he's generating enough revenue to cover all expenditures and won't necessarily come back to you looking for additional money if poor things happen. He's instead going to be creative on his own and then he's going to lean on the three participating schools if a deficit occurs. He's not had that unfortunate situation. He's created a little bit of surplus years he's been operating such that he's been giving money back to the schools as a supplemental return.
So I'm in a bit of a pickle because we're, while I think we can do most of the rest of the agenda fairly quickly, we do have two more reports that we need to get through and our guest speaker is here for the evening. I don't want to hold that up, it's really important, so I'm going to kind of move along. If you have questions that really think the whole board needs to know, please ask them, but if you think it's something you can maybe follow up with afterwards, I'm going to ask that indulgence so we can get through the rest of the agenda. So we're done with the FMR. Dave, can you give us a brief committee, budget committee update?
So we met...
That's good, thank you.
Last week. Jeff Solomon wasn't paying attention, so we nominated him Chair of the Budget Committee. We are basically going through, and it may not be the charge word for word, but we're just going through assumptions and then each major portion of our budgets and getting briefs from Bob on what to expect in the process and basically creating local experts for each board on the budget process upfront so that we can present those issues as they come up later in the year. We have three meetings scheduled, we've done one, we have another meeting in October and another in November, and it should be, and it's going to cover special ed, facilities, cost containment, we've already done. We did a fair amount of work on assumptions and it was great, you know, as an example to go to those meetings, go to the meeting and learn that Eric and Bob have sat down and talked about modeling of fuel oil over many years. So there's been a lot of conversations about these assumptions and things like that that are very meaningful. And I think that's pretty much it. I mean, the members of the committee are myself, Eric, Stacy, you're on there, right?
And Kevin.
Jean, Kevin. Yep, and as I mentioned, Jeff Solomon.
Any questions on that? So it's not a, this is not a committee that's going to do all the budget work and they're presented to you to vote. It's just really a developing, I think you said right, Dave, is developing local expertise.
Yeah, local expertise in the process, not the numbers.
And as Eric knows, it's a very complicated budget. We are missing things we need to get smarter on, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. And 5.4, strategy committee update. I'm going to ask Colleen to give us the update on this important one.
Okay. So we met twice during the summer. We were aiming for a representation for each of the boards. We weren't quite able to get that, but those boards that didn't have a rep, we were very cognizant of their interests, so we hopefully covered everything. And we'll have a, a new charge for the, for a committee coming up. But we met twice for a total of, you know, probably three hours. But we met twice, um, for a total of, you know, probably three hours, um, of time, and what we did during the meetings is we reviewed the legislation, uh, we looked at implications for timelines, so if we were to make decisions going forward, where would that fall in the calendar based on what we're doing for budgets and other meetings? Uh, we looked at proposal requirements outlined by the Agency of Education, if there was to be, uh, a proposal that came out of the committee and the board want, boards wanted to move forward, what, what's the template we have to look at? So we looked at the template. Um, we looked at data requirements, uh, we have some data to start, you know, the work with the regional education district, the red committee work that we did a couple of years ago, we can take some of that, bring it up to date. Um, and then we considered what other data we might need and strategies for going forward. We did some brainstorming, what would we need to do? Um, and then, uh, out of that, we came up with the idea that we really needed a new formal charge coming from our boards. Um, members of the committees that met this summer, say Josh, Jean, me, Bill, Kristen, um, who am I forgetting?
Forgetting, the guy that wasn't there.
Yeah, but we, we understood what we'd want, so we spoke for you, I think. Um, and Bob Mason helped guide us in our thinking and Elaine helped us as, um, with that as well. So we had good, good representation from, um, you know, administrative perspective and a number of districts across the board. Going forward, we're, um, would propose that we, um, develop a formal charge and have a motion, go for it. I don't know how much more you want me to go into.
No, I don't think so. I mean, it really was the, sort of the preliminary work around the merger committee and I, I'm afraid, I'm sorry I didn't get this out earlier, you have in front of you at your place what the, the motion that we intend to, we have to move to create a committee and this is the charge that we're proposing we give the committee. Interesting thing is that the C S S U board can't, each district has to vote to be part of this decision process, so, um, the K E's are right.
Yes.
All the K E's because it's, it's, uh, the representation of the committee has to be proportional to the communities. And so, um, the individual districts will, um, appoint membership at the same level as you appoint membership to the C V U board. And, um, there is an opportunity for any one of the boards to appoint a C V U board member to this committee.
So that's all on your, so all on your, on your local K E. So we're gonna charge the committee, we're, um, also hopefully gonna appropriate, approve of money appropriation for the committee. At your local boards, you're going to vote to join the committee or not, to participate, which we absolutely hope that everybody does. Um, if, the, the very first thing on the charge is to decide, you know, to study the benefits and challenges of forming, so this is not a done deal. The committee's not starting with the charge of taking it to the voters, it's, you know, there's a, uh, it is a study committee to start with. Um, so we hope that everyone participates, but it is a local board decision to do that and to, and to choose who's gonna be on the committee.
And because the S U board hires and evaluates the superintendent and of course those, the work that would need to support it has to come out of the S U, there is a role for the S U. It's not just local K E boards, I mean, it's really, the membership has to be from each district, that's the language of the legislation. So Heinsburg, we have seven board members, five of them, um, serve our pre-K eight population and two of them serve the C V U population. So out of those seven proportionately, um, we would have two members serve on this committee as an example. Okay? All right.
I just have a clarifying question. Uh, so the idea is it, it wouldn't, uh, be taken to a vote in the community unless a majority of this, this body's committee, uh, thought it was a good idea?
Well, the committee will only recommend to the board.
To the board. The board.
So the, the way that the legislation's written, each district chooses to opt into a committee that does so study, puts together self-study, puts together bylaws, how, you know, how would we work together, what would the membership be and so forth? And then, I mean, throughout this, there's gotta be communication that continuously goes back to local boards and this, the S U board. At some point, there needs to be community engagement. If a proposal is written and a proposal goes forward, the state board of ed, of course, needs to approve it. Um, but as far as like timeline, if people are thinking, when would a vote happen, when do people need to make decisions? Um, I have my personal biases about what I think a timeline would be, you know, feasible. Um, and I'll, I'll just put out there that I think, um, it would be next to impossible to have a vote before the community in March. There might be some benefit to have a vote before the community, before June thirtieth to take full advantage of, um...
The incentives.
The incentives. However, there's gotta be a whole lot of discussion about what happens between, you know, if there is a vote, is it, you know, between March and June, that would probably be a window for this year to make the, the deadlines, but there has to be a discussion about whether or not there's even gonna be a vote and, you know, committee members will have to come to some kind of consensus about what the recommendations are going forward, but it's gotta be an iterative process.
I think the recommendation makes a lot of sense, I think Eric's question, which is a good one, is that, is that who actually makes the decision to go to the community? Nicole's there, so I'm gonna lean on Nicole Mace if she wants to answer it, but if she does not, we can, we can get back to you.
Uh, so Nicole Mace, Vermont Board Association, um, the study committee decides whether to proposal with a plan. It goes back to member boards for review and comment, but they do not vote. The S U board does not play a role in whether or not a proposal goes forward, it's the study committee's report. Um, after the member boards have had an opportunity to review and comment, the study committee then submits it to the state board of education, and the state board approves the report, then it automatically goes to the vote.
Oh, interesting. Glad we have the expert in the room. Thank you, Nicole.
Okay. No, because that really affects, you know, the decisions in our local board.
Absolutely. So we're gonna have a lot more discussion on this, trust me, this is gonna be a lot more, and we're not gonna solve or answer all the questions or be able to solve all the problems here, but, um, that is the committee report unless someone else wanted to chime in and, and we just had, need to have enough information so that you understand that we're charging a committee and, um, and appropriating money for it. Yes.
Appropriating money, can you tell me why it's twenty-five thousand dollars?
Well, it happens to line up with the amount of money we can write a grant for.
Ah.
It's convenient.
All right, so, this is a, is there anything else on that? We're gonna get to the action items in two minutes probably, so.
Can you, can you just remind us of the process for tonight, like going back to the local boards and what happens from that point, forward of local boards having a discussion about whether to put somebody on a committee?
Right, so I think I said, so the local boards have to decide tonight if they want to participate and to assign their members on the committee. Right? And then at that point, when we have a committee, we'll move on with the rest of the, move on with the rest of the action items.
So for the C V U board, we don't feel like, we don't feel like doing it because it comes from the individuals.
Right. Correct. But, but because it's by district...
Still not the C V U board.
No, it's, it's not the C V U board, but from the district, there could be someone who happens to sit on the C V U board. For example, yeah.
If you wanna be in, you need to let Mark know.
Brilliant for you.
We'll do it.
Okay, thank you, Colleen. We're gonna move us on to, uh, six point one, discussion matters, policy six point one. So there's a, there was a slew of policies in your packet for discussions.
I think we should put this off, I mean, we all have to do these at our local boards anyway, right?
This is, so discussion matter here is, oh, I'm sorry, what? The, which?
What are the policies, right?
Well, this is, generally, we just talk about here if does anybody had anything, if you have a, a wording change or something that you can pass on, that's fine, but if you think you have something that would, should be considered by the other boards, this would be the time to jump in with that.
Any questions? They're pretty straightforward just by, by design.
Cindy, the only thing I found is I was looking at supervision and evaluation, it says we have adopted a tool and I could find it on the website, I couldn't find it on the website, so.
Uh, it's under the curriculum, we, we, yeah.
We discussed that.
It's there. It's under curriculum instruction, um, not human resources or policy.
Okay.
We're working on it.
Okay. I mean, I think that's not, it's not a good board, uh, board member should understand, I mean, the most important piece of education is the teachers in the classroom and this is a really good way to refresh yourself on how we, um, supervise and evaluate, the most important component of our education system. So any other comments, general comments to share on the discussions on the policies? Right. Action matters. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the twenty-fifteen sixteen board work plan?
So moved.
Thank you, Lorna.
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, the only thing I just, two things I wanted to mention, one is that the common topics, uh...
Still a work in progress.
Are still a work in progress as we try to line up, uh, speakers that are, you know, are worth, everyone's valuable time. Um, so those may change around, but essentially it's, we're gonna be focusing this year on sort of future looking, you know, how, for three to five years, what's everything gonna look like, like, uh, education, governance, um, legal issues, wellness, it says substance used to probably wellness, um, technology, so that's the intent. Uh, the only other thing I noticed that the budget, the gray bar that's got the budget meetings on here, they don't really line up with the budget calendar, the budget calendar is the actual calendar we'll be using, so, um, hmm. Any, anything on, the questions on the work plan?
So is it, consolidation, is that on there just in March?
Um, you know what, I didn't put it on here because I don't know that we've passed the committee yet, so as soon as it will, I'm sure we'll have group, um, reports on a regular basis. Thanks. Good question, Eric. Okay. All in favor of accepting the work plans, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? The ayes have it. Seven point two, can I have a motion to approve the budget assumptions?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Um, any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstains? The ayes have it. Seven point three, can I have a motion to approve the budget calendar?
So moved.
Thank you, Polly, thank you, Lorna. Any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I could abstain on the budget calendar, any abstains? Uh, seven point four, can I have a motion to accept the, to, to charge the merger committee as outlined in the document I handed out?
It would be my pleasure to make that.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Joan. Are there any, uh, comments on the motion or the write-up? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstains? The ayes have it. Can I have a motion to, um, approve, authorize a budget of up to twenty-five thousand dollars for legal consulting and other expenses needed for the committee and to share the cost proportionally with the other member districts on the study committee?
So moved.
Thank you, Kristen.
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Any discussion on that?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
That presumes that we don't get a grant, right?
No, in either way, we can't apply for the grant until the board has charged the committee, and so we didn't want to have to wait another month to get the board together.
But there won't be a proportional billing of the communities and then...
Unless, oh, yeah, exactly, right.
That was...
We will double dip.
Good question, good catch, Josh. So there is money for, for a grant that we just do just by, for this work, so. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm gonna abstain just on the off chance that my father received some of that money, I don't want to be voting for or against it.
Okay, thank you, Keith. So noted. Uh, the ayes have it. Um, seven point six, we added a motion to, um, we're hiring a speech pathologist, point five F T E, Catherine Flynn. Have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Kristen, thank you, Lorna. Anything on here that, comments or questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Catherine's not on the board, so she can't abstain. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, just a reminder that we struck eight point five? And that we changed eight point six to facility supervisor, not, not faculty supervisor.
So moved.
Thank you, Kristen, second?
Yes.
You sure? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it? Confirm?
I just, because of the field bit of work not identifying, I have a professional, potential professional component to abstain.
Okay, so Josh is abstaining, Sandy, for the record.
Okay.
Thank you, Josh. Um, nine point oh, confirm next meeting date, October twentieth is our next regular meeting at five P M. right here. Um, thank you for the patience and moving right along here. Um, I would like to move, since we're running a little late, right, run, roll right into, um, our speaker, so Nicole Mace is the executive director of the V S B A, the new executive director of the V S B A. And she was, uh, kind enough to, uh, accept our invitation to come, so we all can see her face, and she's gonna talk about, a little bit about governance, a little bit about future board work, so as she gets set up.
So you're here with, uh, with the representative, is you're like the Shelburne merger committee?
I think so.
May and, uh, distinguish from other school boards?
I think so.
Oh, okay.
I know. Tell me about it.
This one too.
Interesting.
Good job.
So unless somebody...
She can't do it. I mean, no.
All right. Let's hold on again, three. Come out, then, geez, that would be a power. That would be great.
Well, you know, it's not best, you know.
I'll only go over it. In, I wouldn't want to miss anything exciting happening in Williston. We'll see. That quaint little community to the south. That's a new John, cut.
Did you want her to sign this? Yes. No, it's like she signs plus one, okay. Not that I'm...
So we need the clerk, plus one, so it doesn't matter, I find whoever's nearby.
Yeah.
So you're gonna try to get to zero and work my way back to ninety percent, you know.
Because you are shining that.
I think, uh, so Nicole's gonna start with a little video, so some people are grabbing their dinner, we can probably just go ahead and start the video and then...
...
Well, introduction, okay, then you guys catch your food very quietly.
Watch you in a video.
One of those boards.
I wonder if it was a coincidence, no?
So you can come up here and mic if you're rather, if you're more comfortable, depends if you want a podium.
My problem is I didn't bring a cooker, so I'm gonna have to save time for my laptop. I apologize, but, um, thank you so much for inviting me to join you tonight. My name is Nicole Mace and I am the two-week-old executive director of Vermont School Boards Association. Um, so I, but I have been with the association for four years now as, um, general counsel, and so I know many of you, uh, in that role. Um, before I start tonight, uh, discussion with you about the future of education governance in Vermont, I, um, wanted to share a little bit about my perspective, being with the association over the last four years and the journey that we've been on as an association. Um, one of the most exciting, um, things I was a part of about three years ago was, um, a partnership with the superintendent's association where we really gathered a group of our leaders with leaders from that association, Elaine in, in being a key person in that initiative, to identify what changes do we need to be advocating for as leaders in the state, um, to our public education system in order to ensure that it is able to respond to the unique learning styles and needs of the students that we, um, serve and the communities that we serve. And that resulted in what we called the agenda for world-class education system, which was a real, a call to action, um, on policymakers, uh, local officials, um, and state actors to really spoke... I think it's helpful to, to, for you to, I think sometimes it's, it's, um, difficult to imagine what the benefits might be, or what the changes might look like, and, and so I think this is a useful way, rather than me tell you, why would you believe me?
You can listen to what your, what some neighbors down the road experienced.
Go across the state of Vermont. Over the last decade, what has become apparent as our own enrollment has dropped, and for some of our particularly smallest schools, volatility in the tax rate, getting into budget seasons and having to be reactive because your head spending pre-class pupil was artificially high and not knowing what to do, and then having to really think about cutting programs that were, are vital, um, to students. And so that was really the genesis of, um, the, the boards and the community talking about unification. And for us, it was somewhat natural because, again, I just, I'm so proud of the Mount Mansfield, uh, Union School District, that, um, the board, um, and the system has always talked about student opportunities, student success, but not where students live.
Fifty years ago, the mindset was, these are all our kids, um, and that's continued, you know, for, for fifty years, that these are all our kids in all this school district. And then once we, we were able to, to get, um, community members, um, to wrap their heads around that, that was our biggest challenge, but that was our big, big success. Stop thinking this, of this as an adult issue, and we had to get, make sure we're thinking about this as, as a student issue, as our kids' issue. And that was a challenge, you know, uh, for a lot of communities who were, um, very vested in their schools, vested in their local control and making decisions at a, at a local level.
But I think this new unified board has more local control, because, um, they are able to look at the system in a very comprehensive way, not at a very finite or minute way. In many, many ways, um, they're gonna have more control over the efficiencies, the outcomes of students over the long haul. There's also opportunities for parent-teacher groups, which have, you know, that is where a lot of the work and the local control comes from. Anyway, that's the reality.
So I was a math teacher here at this high school, and then when I became principal, we were trying to figure out why our young learners were not doing well in Algebra One. So we took the ones who had failed first semester Algebra One, and I invited them for lunch with pizza, and we asked them, and we just had an informal conversation, and the superintendent was moving as well. And what they said was fascinating was, when I was in fifth grade, or when I was in third grade, or when I was in second grade, there was this something, fractions or concepts, and, and I didn't really understand it, but we just kept going. And that made me realize how important a unified curriculum, a scaffold of both vertically and horizontally, so across schools, all third graders have a similar curriculum, and then the first grade speaks to the second grade, which speaks to the fifth grade, which speaks to the ninth grade, and it all aligns.
So the merger is gonna get the teachers, like, on the same page, like, curriculum-wise, and have the same resources, so they're all teaching the similar ways and methods? So then when the younger students go into the middle school, they're all on, like, the same point, and they're ready to move on?
Because a lot of our elementary schools are small, and they're near each other, we can share so many more resources, and that we can have a teacher work at Underhill Independent in the morning, and then go over to Underhill Central in the afternoon and teach, you know, foreign languages, and that we can really share the resources and technology and having everything really integrated, um, into every single school, so that when we all come together at the middle school and eventually at the high school, we've all had similar experiences, and we've all had the same resources to build from.
At Smiley, some of our other schools, we had to cut text budgets, so when we're looking at implementing a reader and writer's workshop, a research-based program which is child-focused, and really we see huge gains in writing of our children, we don't have the money to pay for the curriculum or the training for teachers for, from particular schools. We now, together collectively, pool our resources and are more efficient with that in terms of offering combined trainings between schools. We're able to look at things differently due to flexibility, which didn't exist previously. And I see the work that I'm doing, the conversation is different. For instance, I would help supervise and work with some of the school boards, and we would spend hours working on mission and vision over the course of retreats and meetings, and this would be repeated in the six different school boards, and I would bet that if you took the mission statements of every single school in Vermont, they would be relatively similar. We wanna serve all our children, we want them to learn. What's happened now is that conversation is in one place, and now we're really looking at the instruction. Really, what matters is the instruction in the classroom, and we know how hard a job teaching is, and in order to really help us all become the best teachers we can be and reach all of our learners, we need to focus there. When we have distractions up the ladder, we're not able to focus in that area.
There are some cost savings, uh, that we're realizing, um, coming up to this new fiscal year. Um, there is gonna be a lot more, uh, time, I guess, available without having to go to multiple boards and making the same budget presentations. The, the budget process will be a little more streamlined, and now gives up to me to do analysis of, you know, how can we do things better, how can we save money, so a way of combining, um, activities between two schools. It's gonna be easier to win any costs related to big capital improvements over a bigger base, and it'll be easier to absorb, and it'll, it'll make the decisions a little easier. We haven't realized it yet, but we can see what we can do in the food service arena. Is there any savings that can be done there? Again, with the proximity of, um, middle school and elementary schools, you know, what can happen there? Same with custodial services. Uh, we're looking to see what we can do to share the staff. Some of the savings is a little bit more difficult, uh, to implement, uh, quite quickly. I mean, contracts have to go out by a certain time period, and that kind of boxes you in a little bit. Um, the vote happened in November, the first meeting was December 18th or so. To really hit the ground running and make a lot of big changes is gonna be difficult and, and to be ready in time, July 1. It's gonna be the easy ones in the first year, it's gonna be a little bit of a transition year, a lot more planning and studying as to what we can do and how to implement any other changes we have. We'll see more of that, um, as we get into the second year.
So I, I didn't show the whole thing, but I, um, I can, I have sent the link to, uh, both Jeannie and, and Elaine, so if you want to watch the full, um, video, it's, it's available, and it's one, one story, um, cert, and it's, and, um, it certainly speaks to some of the issues that I raised earlier. I know that in this supervisory union, you have a tremendous history of working together, um, on things like curriculum, on, um, professional development, et cetera. Um, and so the, the, the question back to you all is, are there other opportunities to, to work together, or are there other opportunities to really, um, maximize the resources that we already invest in our children, maximize the, the tremendous leadership capital that you have in this system to really leverage, um, more opportunities for students? Um, so I'm gonna give you, I know you've had many discussions about Act 46. I, I think it's important that everybody have at least a, a common baseline, so bear with me, and I'll, I'll take you through a few, um, of what I consider to be the key elements of it. Um, at its core, I think Act 46 is about creating pre-K through 12 education systems that are responsible for, um, every child's education, pre-K through 12. Um, and the crux of the act is really that, on or before July 1 of 2019, educational opportunities will be delivered through, quote, "sustainable governance structures" that provide pre-K 12 opportunities at a reasonable cost. So, um, this law builds on many years of, um, uh, attempts on the part of the General Assembly to encourage governance, um, change, and I think for the first time, and so it builds on Act 153, Act 156, it's really, I think, an evolution of those two laws, and the, and the difference here is there's a, there's a date where, um, districts are pointed to, uh, which creates, um, it's created a lot of energy, I'll tell you that. I've spent most of my nights out talking to boards about what this means, um, but, um, it's also stressful because some of the timelines are pretty tight, and so, um, that's, you know, it's something to be mindful of, but, um, but it's, that's, that's the framework we're currently working in. Um, the, the new structures are expected to achieve a set of outcomes, and you'll notice the first two are really, I think, what this bill, um, was designed to do, was increase the level of equity in terms of the variety and, um, quality of opportunities that are available to students, and to lead students to meet or exceed the education quality standards. If you come to our regional meeting, and the date I do not have, but I can get it to you before I leave tonight, um, which is in a couple of weeks, um, Secretary Holcomb is again joining us for, uh, this year, and she will be talking with folks about the education quality review process that the agency is piloting this year. Are you all in the pilot by any chance?
I know we are not.
No, okay. So sixteen supervisory unions are participating in a pilot, um, and, and the goal is really to establish a system to be able to assess districts' ability to meet those standards. So you're going to start to have a lot more information about what the, what outcomes they're looking for and measuring, um, and whether you feel like you're in a good place. Uh, another goal is to maximize operational efficiencies through greater flexibility to manage, uh, and share resources, um, and to promote transparency and accountability. Again, all accomplishing these goals within a reasonable cost structure. The law identifies a preferred governance structure, so if we're getting to a place where we're in a sustainable governance structure, it's all of us, the law identifies what they view to be the most sustainable, and that is a single pre-K through 12 district that serves 900 students, um, and has one of the four most common structures. We have thirteen different governance structures in Vermont, but most systems fall into one of these four. Here, you all would be a, a system that operates all grades pre-K through 12. Um, the map I, I handed out, um, is an illustration of the different types of operating structures we have in the state of Vermont. And when, um, when you think about the, the different options available under Act 46 and the different sort of paths to 2019, if you will, those paths were really designed to accommodate the level of variability that you see in that map. It's tremendous. Um, and, um, but there are four common ones. So there is, it was mentioned earlier, um, an accelerated phase, so, um, if-
The local control comes from, anyway, that's the reality.
So I was a math teacher here at this high school, and then when I became principal, we were trying to figure out why our young learners were not doing well in Algebra I. So we took the ones who had failed first semester Algebra I, and I invited them for lunch with pizza. And we asked them, and we just had an informal conversation, and the superintendent was moving as well. And what they said was fascinating was, when I was in fifth grade, or when I was in third grade, or when I was in second grade, there was this something, fractions or concepts, and I didn't really understand it, but we just kept going. And that made me realize how important a unified curriculum, a scaffold of both vertically and horizontally, so across schools, all third graders have a similar curriculum. And then the first grade speaks to the second grade, which speaks to the fifth grade, which speaks to the ninth grade, and it all aligns.
So the merger is gonna get the teachers like on the same page like curriculum-wise, and have the same resources, so they're all teaching the similar ways and methods? So then when the younger students go into the middle school, they're all on like the same point, and they're ready to move on?
Because a lot of our elementary schools are small, and they're near each other, we can share so many more resources, and that we can have a teacher work at Underhill Independent in the morning, and then go over to Underhill Central in the afternoon and teach, you know, foreign languages, and that we could really share the resources and technology, and having everything really integrated into every single school, so that when we all come together at the middle school and eventually at the high school, we've all had similar experiences, and we've all had the same resources to build from.
At Smiley, some of our other schools, we had to cut text budgets. So when we're looking at implementing a reader and writer's workshop, a research-based program which is child-focused, and really we see huge gains in writing of our children, we don't have the money to pay for the curriculum or the training for teachers from particular schools. We now, together collectively, pool our resources and are more efficient with that in terms of offering combined trainings between schools. We're able to look at things differently due to flexibility which didn't exist previously. And I see the work that I'm doing, the conversation is different. For instance, I would help supervise and work with some of the school boards, and we would spend hours working on mission and vision over the course of retreats and meetings. And this would be repeated in the six different school boards. And I would bet that if you took the mission statements of every single school in Vermont, they would be relatively similar. "We want to serve all our children. We want them to learn." What's happened now is that conversation is in one place. And now we're really looking at the instruction. Really, what matters is the instruction in the classroom, and we know how hard a job teaching is. And in order to really help us all become the best teachers we can be and reach all of our learners, we need to focus there. When we have distractions up the ladder, we're not able to focus in that area.
There are some cost savings that we're realizing coming up to this new fiscal year. There is gonna be a lot more time, I guess, available without having to go to multiple boards and making the same budget presentations. The budget process will be a little more streamlined. Now it goes up to me to do analysis of, you know, how can we do things better? How can we save money? So a way of combining activities between two schools. It's gonna be easier to win any costs related to big capital improvements over a bigger base, and it'll be easier to absorb, and it'll make the decisions a little easier. We haven't realized it yet, but we can see what we can do in the food service arena. Is there any savings that can be done there? Again, with the proximity of middle school and elementary schools, you know, what can happen there? Same with custodial services. We're looking to see what we can do to share the staff. Some of the savings is a little bit more difficult to implement quite quickly. I mean, contracts have to go out by a certain time period, and that kind of boxes you in a little bit. The vote happened in November. The first meeting was December 18th or so. To really hit the ground running and make a lot of big changes is gonna be difficult, and to be ready in time July 1. It's gonna be the easy ones in the first year. It's gonna be a little bit of a transition year. A lot more planning and studying as to what we can do and how to implement any other changes we have. We'll see more of that as we get into the second year.
So I didn't show the whole thing, but I have sent the link to both Jeannie and Elaine. So if you want to watch the full video, it's available, and it's one story. And it certainly speaks to some of the issues that I raised earlier. I know that in this supervisory union, you have a tremendous history of working together on things like curriculum, on professional development, et cetera. And so the question back to you all is, are there other opportunities to work together? Or are there other opportunities to really maximize the resources that we already invest in our children? Maximize the tremendous leadership capital that you have in this system to really leverage more opportunities for students? So I'm gonna give you, I know you've had many discussions about Act 46. I think it's important that everybody have at least a common baseline, so bear with me, and I'll take you through a few of what I consider to be the key elements of it. At its core, I think Act 46 is about creating pre-K through 12 education systems that are responsible for every child's education, pre-K through 12. And the crux of the act is really that, on or before July 1 of 2019, educational opportunities will be delivered through, quote, "sustainable governance structures" that provide pre-K-12 opportunities at a reasonable cost. So this law builds on many years of attempts on the part of the General Assembly to encourage governance change, and I think for the first time, so it builds on Act 153, Act 156. It's really, I think, an evolution of those two laws. And the difference here is there's a date where districts are pointed to, which creates, it's created a lot of energy, I'll tell you that. I've spent most of my nights out talking to boards about what this means. But it's also stressful, because some of the timelines are pretty tight. And so that's, you know, it's something to be mindful of, but it's, that's the framework we're currently working in. The new structures are expected to achieve a set of outcomes. And you'll notice the first two are really, I think, what this bill was designed to do was increase the level of equity in terms of the variety and quality of opportunities that are available to students, and to lead students to meet or exceed the education quality standards. If you come to our regional meeting, and the date I do not have, but I can get it to you before I leave tonight, which is in a couple of weeks, Secretary Holcomb is again joining us for this year, and she will be talking with folks about the education quality review process that the agency is piloting this year. Are you all in the pilot by any chance?
I know we are not.
No, okay. So six team supervisory unions are participating in a pilot. And the goal is really to establish a system to be able to assess districts' ability to meet those standards. So you're going to start to have a lot more information about what outcomes they're looking for and measuring, and whether you feel like you're in a good place. Another goal is to maximize operational efficiencies through greater flexibility to manage and share resources, and to promote transparency and accountability. Again, all accomplishing these goals within a reasonable cost structure. The law identifies a preferred governance structure. So if we're getting to a place where we're in a sustainable governance structure, it's all of us, the law identifies what they view to be the most sustainable, and that is a single pre-K through 12 district that serves 900 students, and has one of the four most common structures. We have 13 different governance structures in Vermont, but most systems fall into one of these four. Here, you all would be a system that operates all grades pre-K through 12. The map I handed out is an illustration of the different types of operating structures we have in the state of Vermont. And when you think about the different options available under Act 46, and the different sort of paths to 2019, if you will, those paths were really designed to accommodate the level of variability that you see in that map. It's tremendous. And, but there are four common ones. So there is, it was mentioned earlier, an accelerated phase. So if the electorate approves a merger plan that would include all member districts of a supervisory union forming a single district by July 1, 2016, then, and they have a minimum ADM of 900 and will be operational in 2017, there are a variety of incentives available, the biggest one being a five-year tax rate reduction starting at 10 cents in the first year. Yes, sir?
Any questions now?
Sure, if you need, if you need a question answered or be able to stay with me?
Two for this slide.
Sure.
On the first bullet point, in the Mount Mansfield merger, Huntington did not vote in favor.
Correct.
And there was a circumstantial consequence to that.
Correct.
Hypothetically, if we engaged in that process, and the merger committee submitted the report, DOE approved it, and we had a vote in all of our towns, hypothetically, if Heinsberg did not vote in favor of it, but everybody else did, what happens?
You would form a modified, unified, union school district, but you would not be eligible for the accelerated incentives. If you set it up that way, that you, that if, even if one district votes negatively or not to approve the merger, and everyone else will move forward, you would, you would form essentially what Mount Mansfield did. You would be eligible for the other incentives, which I will talk about, but not the accelerated.
When you say "you," do you mean Heinsberg or everybody?
Everybody. You would not have met the criteria for the accelerated merger. The accelerated merger requires all member districts of a supervisory union.
Speaking of the accelerated incentives, can you explain to me like I'm a six-year-old? A six-year-old with a rudimentary understanding of property taxes? What does that mean?
Well, so you, a single district, single tax rate. So based on the wonderful calculations that your top-notch business manager will do about what that new tax rate will be, you will then see a reduction off of that rate by 10 cents in the first year. So, and then, so you have a uniform tax rate, but it looks a little different community to community because the CLA still exists. So they didn't eliminate the CLA. The big difference between accelerated and what we're calling conventional is that you can realize the savings immediately in the first year. If you move a conventional route, there's a five, you can, your tax rate can't go up or down more than 5% in a given year. So there are some places that have, you know, done some analysis, and there are districts within that supervisory union that could see a, you know, 17 to 20 cent drop in their tax rate. If they go with an accelerated model, they can realize that in the first year. If they choose the more conventional route, they have to take a stepped approach down. So I don't know what your situation is, but that's, I think, one of the little-known big differences between the accelerated and the conventional. Your tax rate can't go up more than 5% under the accelerated, but it can go down as much as it needs to in order to reach that district-wide rate.
Can you just, I'm sorry if I missed, can you just real quick explain the difference between accelerated and conventional?
Yeah, so this is accelerated. This is, you have a vote by July 1, 2016, and all member districts agree to move forward. I'm gonna get to conventional, but I want to make sure everybody's got the accelerated before I move on. Good?
No.
No.
One question.
Okay.
Who's funding this tax rate reduction?
We all are. So it's a statewide system. So we are a statewide education fund. There's no separate appropriation for these tax rate reductions. So to the extent five or six districts move forward with this, and their tax rates are reduced, it will increase the base rate for everyone in order to raise the money to pay for that.
What happens if everybody goes to it?
Everybody's not gonna go for it. Just look at the map. It's not possible for everybody to go for it.
If everyone did, you'd at least get, everyone would get the reduction, instead of you not getting it, everyone else getting it.
Right. Well, we'd all go up and we'd come down a little.
The pie's only so big.
So I'll just say, testimony in the General Assembly, the assumption was only five or six places would do it. I think they modeled 10 folks to understand the impact on the Ed Fund. It was very minimal. But the assumption is that not everybody is going to be ready to do this. Not everyone can do this. If you look at the map, if you have a blend of operating structures, unless you have folks that are willing to go non-operating or operate everything, you can't form a single district if you have different operating structures. So they simply can't do it. So you're not gonna see statewide adoption. Yes, sir. Or ma'am, sorry.
Can you follow up with what happened to Huntington specifically, when they voted not to join?
They, they are, they maintain their K to four district. They are members of the union district, grades five through 12. And they, you know, they participate in decisions on the board that impact those grade levels, and they have a board that oversees their elementary school. I would suggest you talk to folks there to find out the operational differences. I know that there have been some, but they're able to speak better to that than I am. But, so, conventional transition. So if you form the MUUSD, that's the, some people call it the Mud. That's the Chitin and East example. Act 153 and Act 156 are still good law. So if you're able to form something that conforms to one of the red variations of Act 156, which I think in this context is the most appropriate example, is the modified unified union school district. So that's where, if you have a majority of the elementary districts that are members of a union high school district, vote to approve a merger, but not all do, the ones that vote to do it form a single district. The ones that vote not to are not, do not become part of that district. And the new district is eligible to receive incentives. Is that clear? You could also just say, you know what, we are all going to form a single district. We just need a little bit more time. We're not gonna get it done by July 1, 2016. Our communities need a lot more time to engage in this conversation. As long as you are operational by July 1, 2019, there's no deadline for a vote of the electorate. Study committee grants are only available through 2017. So you want to get moving in order to be able to be reimbursed for those costs. But there is no deadline for a vote of the electorate. If you, as a supervisory union, decide you want to form a single pre-K-12 district, you just don't want to do it on the accelerated timeline, that's fine. And you would have four years of tax rate reductions available to you. The 5% protection against increases and decreases would apply. There are also some other incentives that I haven't gone through, because I'm trying to keep this to a shortened version. If you want the full coverage of Act 46, you can come to the regional meeting. But there are transition funds available of $150,000 to cover any costs associated with transitioning. If you, any of your districts receive a small schools grant, which I don't think you do, but if you did, you could keep that. The 3.5% ADM Hold Harmless Protection, which is a feature of our funding formula, protects against losses in population, in student population. That's expect, that is going to be phased out and eliminated entirely in fiscal year '21. If you form a new district, you maintain that protection in the formula. So that's the, those are, is everyone clear on the difference at this point? Okay. So those are the two paths that involve formal changes to your governance structure and unification. So folks are gonna be doing a lot of that activity over the next couple of years. At the same time, as I mentioned, the Agency of Education is going to begin its education quality review process to evaluate your ability to meet these standards. Also going to be monitoring governance activity and keeping the state board informed. In 2018, based on the results of the quality reviews and governance activity, statewide, the secretary is charged under the law with developing a statewide plan to transition all districts to sustainable governance structures. And the state board has to adopt either that plan or a modified version of the plan at the end of November of 2018. Implementation is effective July 1 of 2019. Yes, Colleen?
Just clarification for us. So whether or not we choose to do it sooner, it's, given the current legislation, it's slated to happen later, unless legislators come back and say, "Bad idea. We want to do something different." Is that correct?
I don't know what you mean by "bad idea, we want to do something different." Act 46 repeal, or?
Yeah, or adjustment or something. It's always an option.
Consolidation is going to happen, given the current legislation.
So this is what the law, as it stands today, says. I get asked a lot what the likelihood of repeal is. I do not carry a crystal ball, but what I will say is that, having been witness to these conversations for half a decade, I'll say, I don't see the situation, the circumstances that created the perceived need for this law are not going away. The options to address those circumstances are limited. And when you, when you start to move in a different direction, other people get upset. So this was a, I think, a balancing act. It had the support of both parties, overwhelming bipartisan support. This wasn't sort of, you know, the governor's bill or one party's bill that if we just get new folks into office. So, you know, it's not to say that there won't be tweaks. Certainly, there's a lot of concern about the allowable growth rate and the effect that that's gonna have on budgets this year. But, you know, and I can't predict exactly what's going to happen, but I will say it was not, it was one of the more thoughtful and methodical approaches to public policy I've seen, and it had a lot of support, so.
So broad bipartisan support.
Yes. It was not a close, close vote. It was a tough vote for people, but it wasn't a close vote. So, state board adopts the plan. And it won't require districts to lose choice or require districts to pay tuition. And it won't include the following, it won't include interstate districts. It won't include regional career tech center districts. There are three of them in the state. They're their own entities. And it won't include districts that voluntarily merge on their own into either a preferred structure or one of the, one of the other structures that have been created under Act 153 or Act 156. So what does that mean for Vermont? What is this map going to look like in three years? What I can tell you is, since the law passed, representatives from our association, the Superintendents Association, and the Agency of Education met with over 30 supervisory unions who immediately sort of brought groups together to come down and start to learn more about the act. That was, that happened in the month of June. Since then, we've gone out and done numerous presentations and worked with boards, just like I am here tonight, to think through where they're at and where they might be headed. We know that there are 19 study committees that have formed up around the state. 12 of them are considering an accelerated merger. So if Act 46 was intended to inspire action, it has done that. And it's really the work of study committees around the state to think through what makes sense, given the goals that they have for their students, the goals of the act, and where they sit structurally speaking. So if you look at the map, and I just want to, it's a terrific tool for me when I'm talking with folks. I was in the Northeast Kingdom last night, so I was here. And I was meeting with folks from three different supervisory unions who are really struggling with, we don't have 900 students. We don't have structures that can come together in a way where we really can satisfy some of the criteria. What do we do? And so they're in a position where they have to look outside their supervisory union boundaries and start to identify partners that they can work with who share their philosophy, who share their operating structure, who share a geographical proximity, if that makes sense. They've got a big challenge ahead of them in terms of even identifying what course to take ahead. We're also doing a lot of work in this part of the state. And this is where we see most of the union high school districts. And the transition there is, relatively speaking, more straightforward, because your operating structures are the same. Oftentimes, we see more stable leadership in these areas. And the question really is, how are we gonna leverage this opportunity to really move forward? Either because we want to take advantage of the tax incentives, and we can meet the accelerated timeline and take advantage of those. In some places, that's the sort of motivating factor. And in others is, you know, we've been talking about this for a really long time. We know we can be doing better by our kids. Now's the time to do it. So it's very difficult for me to predict where this is all going to go over the next few years. What I can say is I've been tremendously impressed with the spirit that school board members are bringing to this conversation, and the thoughtfulness, and the willingness to sort of think anew about what's possible. And I think in places such as your situation, it's, we are likely to see larger school districts in Vermont that are focused on pre-K through 12 opportunities for students. Some places are gonna have a harder road to get there, and they're gonna have to focus on things like, how do we build a common set of policies? How do we build a common collective bargaining agreement? Because we haven't done that necessarily before. Or how do we start to focus on curriculum? Places like here that have done a lot of that work, I think, are positioned to leverage, who knows what you're gonna come up with in terms of what you could accomplish? If you start to spend the next six months looking at this and really thinking through together what opportunities you could realize. If you, you know, put your administrators, as in the video, you know, if the focus is solely on instruction, solely on students, what does that look like? What does that mean? And so I think you're in a great position. You have time. You have a structure that is relatively straightforward. And you have tremendous leadership, both in the administration and among board members. I think you've got a great hand you've been dealt. I've been talking to a supervisor, or superintendent from this part of the state last week, and he said, "We have been dealt a heck of a bad hand on Act 46, because we can't fit into any of those boxes." So what you're, you have sort of the luxury of is thinking through, does this make sense for us? And if so, how can we really leverage it to move forward with some of the things we've been dying to do? Whether it's increasing better access to technology for every student, or increasing after-school or summer programming opportunities? I don't know what you've been dreaming about for your kids, but is this an opportunity for you to come together and think about how you might, how you might start to make progress, even though I know you've made a lot of progress? So I encourage you to start your conversations with, what is it that we want for our students? It's so easy to go to structure. And how many board members are we gonna get? And how, what are we gonna do about this property and that property? And that's all important, and all those issues will get addressed. But if you haven't started with, and I know you all have done a lot of work on these questions, so it's a little bit easier. so it's a little bit easier, but have a common sense of what it is we're trying to accomplish here, and also what your communities value. At the end of the day, this is going to require a vote in your communities, and you need to be really in tune with what's important to folks. Change is scary, and there are opportunities to design articles of agreement, design your future in a way that retains what matters most in your communities, even when you're going to have to let go of some things, and a really honest assessment of the challenges that you face. And asking your administrators to come to you and say, what aren't we doing well? Where could we improve? Because you may be able to start to identify some limitations because this is the way we've always done things, or this is the way we have to do things, that may be getting in the way of you addressing those challenges and better meeting the needs of students. So that's what I had to say tonight. And here's my contact information. Nikki South is the project director that the School Board's Insurance Trust, the ESBA, and the Superintendent's Association have partnered on a project to ensure that folks in the field have what they need. This is a huge lift. There's a lot of work happening around the state, and so having one person that's sort of helping to keep an eye on all these projects has been really, really helpful. So Nikki is that person. So if you form a study committee and you want more information about supports that might be available, she's your gal. Any questions?
I'm really conscious of the fact that I've just stepped, I'm starting to step on the boards' mind.
Oh, gosh, sorry.
So if you have a question, maybe I'll send it to me, and I'll either, if we can get an answer, or I'll get it up to Nicole, and she can get us an answer.
Yeah. Email me any questions you have. I'm happy to do it that way.
Thank you very much.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn.
We don't have to be in the executive session.
We don't need the executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. Thank you, Kristen. I'll motion the action. We're adjourned.